Good morning. I now call the June 15, 2023 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m., mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each school day. We will now observe a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I ask that those in attendance to please silence their electronic devices or remove hats to avoid disturbing others, and I'll now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students or their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. And just for the record, Ms. Vice Chair Nancy Thrower is on the phone with us today, so she's not physically present, but she is present with us. And so we will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Pleased to see you all today, and Vice Chair Thrower on the phone. I just have one comment I wanted to make as we begin today's conversations. So this week, for the first time, the superintendent organization partnered with the school safety department in the state and with Mr. McFadden's leadership. Mr. Sincultary was there and members of our mental health team, Ms. Don O'Doll and Amanda Steckman, Ms. Talbert Irving. There was a joint meeting held over the course of three days to ensure that we are being very intentional in collaborating safety with mental health and well-being for our students. And we had the opportunity during this time to hear from the fathers who lost children at Parkland. Can't imagine the grief, but the work that they've done for the state of Florida, for our schools and for our students is just remarkable. I had the chance to hear from them, and I had a chance to talk with them individually. And as a superintendent, you know, hear from them their experiences. And so a lot of lessons learned. We've always heard about this impact, what's happened, what the state has done and what they have done. But I want to thank our teams because one of the things that came out from the conversations is that in Marion County, our Safe Schools team works so hand-in-hand with our mental health teams, our academic teams, and it's just a natural way of doing things. And they even said they realized in their districts it doesn't happen that way. But we are committed to ensuring safe schools and also treating every child and looking at what their needs are to ensure we're providing positive supports. And so we don't treat things, wait till they, you know, they might occur, but we're being very preventive and very purposeful in how we look at each and every child. It goes hand-in-hand with our vision of helping every student succeed. And so when we look at student discipline data, we look at early warning indicators, and we look at the mental health challenges that arise in schools where we are very committed and very intentional each and every day with how we reach children in crisis and provide safe environments. I just wanted to mention that to you, Board, and thank the team. There's always work to be done. There are a lot of challenges out there, but I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of the work that's already naturally in place because of the willingness and the collaboration amongst our departments. So wanted to call attention to that. And more information to come. A lot of legislative changes have come from the Office of Safe Schools. A lot of things, a lot of new opportunities at the state level, a lot of reporting structures that'll change that I've alluded to in the past with regard to reporting of incidences. We've talked about levels of assessor, and so more to come on that. But I just wanted to provide some context to the power of our work and what we're committed to continuing to do. So I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to share that.
Thank you. So we will now continue on with the briefing?
Yes, thank you. So we will start today with one of our items as a follow-up. Could ask for Ms. Dobbins to come forward and, under her leadership and the great work they're doing with operations, answer any questions with the follow-up from the Central District Office that occurred last time. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
Absolutely. Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board members. Good morning, Dr. Gullett. So this is an opportunity that you've asked to bring this topic back for discussion. You received an email, I believe, on June 6 from Mr. Hurley here with a follow-up on some of the questions you've asked, and at this time, we're here to answer any of your questions you may have.
I'll start with a quick question because I believe that the property in question had received a few offers on it. Do we, is that accurate, number one? And number two, do we have a status of those offers?
Yes, ma'am. That is accurate. When I spoke to the realtor, they had three potential offers. I spoke on email to him this morning. His reply was that it's not under contract quite yet, but they're getting closer, so I would suspect that it's going to be under contract relatively soon, which...
Will potentially negate the rest of our conversation, but...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Board, additional questions from Ms. Dobbins. Dr. James?
Good morning. Mr. Hurley, he shared that a Phase 2 would have an estimated base cost of $4,500. And I just, in my personal experience, that's not how much it costs at all. So I can appreciate that that's the number shared, but just to bring light to the Board, the Phase 2 that I was going to have to do not three months ago was $20,000. So just for perspective when we're looking at the numbers.
So what was the $42,000? I mean, I saw that in the email.
We'll have Mr. Hurley come up since he investigated those numbers.
Good morning. Would you please state your question again, please?
I saw the email that stated something, estimated total of $42,000. It gives like a lot of different inspections and all those types of things.
Right. So that included Phase 1 environmental study, but it also included what's basically referred to as a due diligence, all the due diligence research that you would do when you're pursuing purchasing a property.
That would be in addition to?
That would be, that would be the cost of looking, getting a survey, getting two appraisals, getting an environmental Phase 1 analysis, getting the, the building inspected for mold and lead-based paint, et cetera, like that, so that you get a feel for what you're going into with a purchase of an existing property and whatever may be on it. And so those would be upfront costs, but you would want to have all of that information compiled so that you could make a decision. Does this look like we're getting in over our heads? Is it something that we want to do? Do we want to pursue it? Or would we stop at this point?
So my thoughts here are that, I guess, you're asking for direction from the Board as to what we do next if we pursue this idea. Ms. Dobbins, if you want to clarify what the intention is of us, what we're needing to find out today?
Yes, ma'am. So based on the prior meeting discussions, we were interested in submitting a letter of interest and having an agreement of access to this property, but as, as we've discovered, that might be a mute point. But it does set us up for what would we do in the future if another property arises and we want it to pursue it. So it might be, you know, that we would bring it back at that time, or we could, we could go ahead and template a letter of interest and an agreement and work with Attorney Powers to have those on standby so we could potentially move along that process. So for today, we can seek recommendation for those things in preparation if this property goes under contract and then comes off. Is it something we want to continue to pursue? Or if another property comes on the horizon? So it's a little bit of, we were hoping to have discussions to move forward with those things, but in light of it possibly being under contract very soon, it kind of opens us up to what is our next step, other than preparing in case it comes back off contract or another property arises.
So Board, what is your purview? Dr. James?
Seeing as there's potential for there to be an offer submitted, I certainly wouldn't want to invest any money in moving forward with this due diligence work and then it be for naught if an offer is put in from another entity. So at this point, I don't, I don't want to move forward with, well, not at this point because I didn't really want to regardless, but I definitely don't want to move forward now with this due diligence, but I am not against preparing a template for an LOI and other things. I'm always looking for ways for us to be proactive so that when we come into a circumstance, we will have more things prepared to be able to bring to the discussion.
Madam Chair, may I? Ms. Dobbins, can you clarify? The request is not to spend any money here, the letter, in the event there's an opportunity to explore it, but we would certainly, and Board members, I will say, and I know I've shared this with you one-on-one, I would never proceed as the superintendent with anything without bringing it to the Board first. I just, I just won't do that, do a letter without Board approval or getting your, getting your feedback on anything that might be of a budgetary item. So Ms. Dobbins, can you clarify?
Yes, absolutely. You are correct. We're not asking to move forward on investing any money in this property at this time due to the impending contract that's, that's being set up. What, what I was saying is if we could get a templated letter of interest and a templated access agreement, then those things are easier to bring to the Board if we find another property or if this property comes off contract. Those items would require Board action anyways. So we were just in discussion, and it's really outside of the Board can work with Attorney Powers to have those items ready in the future if we bring it back to the Board to say, hey, we're looking at this property, would you approve this letter and this? But at this time, just to reiterate, we are not asking to spend any money on this property due to the status.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Reverend Cummings?
With this, seeing that we're not going to move forward with this property, I'm in agreement, let's just go ahead and come up with a template for the LOI and so that it doesn't hamper any future processes.
I agree. I'm excited to be proactive so that we're prepared to move forward when the right thing is presented before us. So I look forward to that process.
And I too agree. If we can work on ensuring we have the templates in place, that will be helpful for us moving forward so that we won't have a long, drawn-out process. We'll already have the language in place as to what that letter of intent is without bogging down the conversation, and I'm not wanting to do that at this juncture, but I would like to ask of the Board if the interest of the Board is for staff to pursue existing properties. The districts, the Central District Office conversation has continued for years, and it continues to be an issue for the district. And the crumbling infrastructure that we are in currently continues to be an issue. So I would like to ask the Board, are we interested in staff pursuing existing properties as we considered the Paddock Mall and we considered the Star Banner Building and we considered all these things previously? Or is it the interest of the Board to pursue properties that we then would perhaps build something from the ground up? Or, I guess there's three options, or pursuing the option of what the cost would be to update the facility we're, we're sitting on today? So, Ms. Conrad?
I personally am not interested in looking at that right at this moment. I feel that we owe it to the community to get the two elementary schools that we are talking about, that we so desperately need. I think we have to put our best foot forward in getting the needs of our students met first, and then I think that's the time to tackle that conversation because we do desperately need it. I've encouraged some community members to come by and visit MTI, see if the offices would be suitable for them to work in every day. And so I know that the need is huge, and I understand that, and I appreciate the work that our team is doing. It's really almost an impossible task. But I do believe that we owe it to our students first, and we need to get that underway before we begin discussion on a district office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Chair. Dr. James?
I certainly don't want to see us move forward with the district office right now. I think I've been pretty clear about that from this seat. I think that we need to show that we're going to do facilities for students before we do facilities for the adults. I don't think we need to do this concurrently. I think one needs to happen before the other. I think that, my question is, in the plan that was presented, because we did approve to move the technology facility, and so that is going to move. And once that happens, that parcel where the old district office was will be available to sell. Is that correct?
Once we have placement of the other staff members that are in that building, so we would have to relocate some staff out of that building.
And the plan also included putting district staff at Fordham. Is that still happening either way?
That's still on the table.
Okay. So we have space at Fordham, and while no one likes this, there is space at Reddick Collier. So if this entire facility imploded, there is half a school at Reddick Collier that is available for people to have offices. And we have students in portables, so we could put adults in portables. I think there are lots of ways to solve this facility imploding. I mean, I was washing my hands the other day, and, and the sink doesn't even work in the bathroom, so I get it. But there's also sinks that don't work in elementary schools. So until we can close that gap, I'm not comfortable paying for a district office, especially when we have space available on some of our school sites and we have the warehouse that we're finishing and the tech, the technology center that we're going to do. So that's, that's where I am with that. I personally don't want to even really see much discussion about improving facilities here, other than the Band-Aids that have to occur for it to continue to function.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings? Okay. Vice Chair Thrower, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this conversation?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. It sounds to me like the building on Magnolia is a non-starter, so it's back to the drawing board. Is that the gist of what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. That seems like where we are.
Okay.
Okay. So at this juncture, we certainly do not have consensus to move forward with any conversations about a Central District Office?
We have consensus about the LOI.
We have consensus about draft template language?
I mean, I didn't hear Vice Chair. She didn't say.
Oh. Vice Chair, you're in agreement that we should move forward with a template for a letter of intent should another opportunity present itself?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's, yes, that'll help us be proactive when the next opportunity presents itself.
Thank you so much. So you have consensus with that, and I believe that will conclude that item for us. Ms. Dobbins, is there any public comment? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Ms. Dobbins and Mr. Hurley.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Dr. Gullett.
Sorry, I wanted to get to before the public comment. Just as a means of clarification, as was mentioned in a previous work session, the reason the district office came up is because someone came to us. Justice in the past, former Sears building, former Kmart, another building, I think it was Sun Trust at the time, other buildings even before my time, but since I've been here. So I just wanted to clarify that's the reason that it came forward, is a community member's coming to us with an opportunity. So appreciate the, the direction of the Board on this item, that only the, the template would be created, but it's only if someone comes to us with something that we feel compelled to seek review on behalf of the district, but, but it is not the intention of the Board, or the request, rather, of the Board for us to go seek anything. Because that, we haven't done that outside of, of somebody coming to us. Is that the intention of the Board?
I believe that that's the direction that I have understood. We definitely do not have consensus for the, to, to seek out something.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 4.1.
Yes, so we have Ms. Morant coming forward, our Executive Director for Human Resources. This is a follow-up to our district staffing plan. As a reminder that the district staffing plan does not indicate just employees who are in central office positions, because many of these positions are supporting schools directly. But I do want to provide a little context as Ms. Morant is getting settled, that as I mentioned in my briefing notes about Safe Schools, one of the items that is in flux right now that's coming up are a lot of those mandates coming from Safe Schools in particular. And so you'll see one, one item of adjustment that I've encouraged a team, let's go ahead and make some changes with the mental health staff under Safe Schools. And so I wanted to provide context and thank the Board for your patience, as I know it's summer and we've needed to be flexible, but I think being flexible indicates that we are doing what we need to do for our students, and we will continue to always do that as the needs arise. So thank you for your understanding. Ms. Morant?
Thank you, and good morning, Dr. Gullett, Chair Campbell, and members of the Board. As Dr. Gullett mentioned, several change, or proposed changes have been made since the 6-1 work session, and so I will quickly summarize those. They include upgrading our secretaries to executive secretaries that are with our two area superintendents and three senior executive directors, so three of those, um, five of those, adding back the ESC director and the ESC secretary, moving K-12 scheduling from our senior executive director of pathways to our secondary area, adding two reading intervention teachers to elementary, adding a secretary to food services. There is also a correction. I previously presented two plumber helpers, but made that change to actually two plumbers, changing the director of Safe Schools to executive director, adding a coordinator 1 of mental health to Safe Schools, which is the piece Dr. Gullett just mentioned, and adding a coordinator 2 to transportation. The additional cost, as we've heard before, is approximately 7.7 million. This is for all funds. 4.2 million is general funds. So I want to make a note to say that these amounts are before any proposed increases to benefits in French for the 23-24 year. Also, this increase is in comparison to the approved budget from September 2022 until now. So included in this number includes positions that were also added throughout the 22-23 school year after the budget was approved. Such positions as our bus drivers that we've mentioned were back-funded, bus aides, behavior techs, ESC specialists, et cetera, that we've added throughout this year. The total cost for the proposed positions that are being added that we're discussing today for the 22-23 school year is approximately $2 million. So I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Gullett, or Chair Campbell?
Happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Dr. James?
My first question is about the org chart.
Okay.
So, and, and I'm confused because some departments, well, executive director of Safe Schools is orange, but I think it should be green if every other executive director is green. Okay?
That's correct.
That's the one I noticed. Why are there coordinators listed in some departments but not in others? But I think there are coordinators in those departments.
So normally, we don't list the coordinators. We go as low as supervisor on this org chart. But if you'll see, some of the higher level or admin level employees who are on the org charts have coordinators that report directly to them, so we've included them. So for instance, in HR, we have a coordinator in that area, but we haven't listed it on this org chart. We go as low as the supervisor.
Because you go, it's only the coordinators who are reporting direct...
Directly to that admin level position.
My other question is, I, so the senior executive directors for high school and for elementary? Do they not have coordinators who report directly to them? Or supervisors?
I don't think they have coordinators that report directly to them, no.
Okay. So the people in their department will report to who?
I'm not sure what you're asking. I apologize.
Okay, Dr. Livinggood's department for, as a senior executive director for high school and secondary curriculum, there is a plethora of people in that department who report to, she's responsible for their evaluations and report to her, right?
Correct.
Okay. And none of them are a coordinator or supervisor? They're all below a coordinator status?
She does have coordinators. She has three, so we can add them to the org chart.
I just wanted to be as transparent as possible. So if it's, if it's coordinators who report directly, then I just think that that should be representative in all departments. Because I think when I look at it and I look at the lines coming down, I'm looking at it like how the blocks indicate, if, if you're just looking at it on the paper, the blocks indicate how big a department is, right? How many people that person has? Even though we know that there's so many more under this tree, but if you're just looking at it from an eye that it doesn't know the backstory. And so if I look at this, it kind of looks like now those two senior executive directors are just have schools, just like the area superintendents, but that's not the case.
So we can certainly update the org chart to match the staffing plan to include those coordinators. That's not a problem.
And then the directors that are underneath but not connected to the senior executive directors, they all just report directly to the deputy superintendent?
Specifically, which are you asking about? The early learning? Yes, they report directly.
So those six orange plus the transformation principle all report directly to the deputy superintendent?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. So those were just some things that I saw on this that I had confusion about, so just clarifying that would be great. I, there's a piece to this puzzle that's still missing, and that is the Board Clerk. I would like to see the Board Clerk fall on the other side of the School Board, so Legal Department. And I, I think Legal Department, now that we're going to be adding a staff attorney, is a little confusing, so I don't know if there's a way to not say Legal Department, but to say like School Board Attorney versus Staff Attorney to differentiate.
We're the Legal Department, and that's the Staff Attorney for the Superintendent.
Okay.
So the Staff Attorney would go under the Superintendent's office?
And it's next to the Superintendent. I just...
I, I don't know. I've not...
I, I, I don't know. I've not been, I don't know anything about what the intention is, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, we're very intentional. I think it, and I'm looking, but it says Staff Attorney, that we have no intention in creating a legal department. That's just to provide support to our employees, so.
That person would fall under the...
Correct. Correct. To support our schools and departments. But we're not creating a legal department.
Okay. So, so I would just like to see the Board Clerk, who's not listed on here, listed as a, a employee of the School Board.
Okay, so we've, we've had discussion about that, and Mr. Powers may want to weigh in as well. So there is no statute of rule that defines whether the Board Clerk must be employed by the Superintendent or the Board. However, again, jumping anytime, Mr. Powers, it would need to be clear as far as the roles of the Board Clerk, but in speaking with Dr. Gullett, if that is the consensus of, or the wish of the Board, we can make the adjustment. We just, you know, we need to know that. And I'll allow Attorney Powers to weigh in on anything.
Sure, I mean, I'll just, frankly, I'll just read my email that I sent in response to that question. I find no statute of rule that defines whether the Board Clerk must be employed by the Superintendent or the Board. There is, however, Florida Statute 1001.51, that delegates certain duties, including record keeping and agenda development, to the Superintendent, who in turn, delegates them to her employee, the Board Clerk. It's also important to distinguish the roles of Board Clerk versus other job duties that we have made associated with that position. Statutorily, the Board Clerk's primary duty is keeping the Board's official records and filings for us to transmit to, for example, the Fifth District Court of Appeals or a federal court, if our lower proceedings or quasi judicial proceedings needed to go to those courts. Now, the secretarial role for record keeping and, and the, um, purpose of keeping minutes and things like that, that's a delegated role, that's separate from the Board Clerk role. And then, um, other duties that might be considered Board Services, you know, setting, setting up the trips or meetings or any of those things, are a different set of job responsibilities. So what's required by statute is the Board Clerk portion, and typically that has, and in, in all districts that I know of, has been done under the Superintendent's Department, or in this, under, under operations. However, I couldn't find anything that indicates that it has to be done that way. So we, there would just need to be a lot of clarity with roles and responsibility, because if the Superintendent is going to be delegating certain tasks to her, a practical consideration would be whether anyone sitting in a Superintendent's chair, or in my chair, to be fair as well, would be comfortable delegating tasks that you're statutory required to do, to someone who doesn't answer to you. So you have to, there has to be a clear handoff.
Thank you for sharing. I think for me, what I would like to see is, is that transition to a School Board employee, and then the Superintendent or the Attorney asks of the Board to set a, a set of tasks that are typically accomplished, and we agree that those are tasks that can easily be passed through. Dr. Gullett has a list of things that she tasks the Board Clerk with, and those can continue to be passed through with the Board coming to, coming to consensus, majority consensus on that. Same for you. So if there are tasks that typically are passed through, then, then, you know, we just come up with that. But I, I would, Ms. Morant, the job description, what is the job description attached to that position?
Administrative Assistant.
Okay. And we could maintain that, that job description?
We would just have to, probably do a separate one, because we do include, include who the position reports to. So we would do a separate one for the Board Clerk, but if you want the essential duties to remain the same, we can do that as well.
Yeah, the essential duties could stay the same. We would just change the language at the top. So that would be the, um, the ask, the ask, and, and she doesn't, the, the Board Clerk currently in the org chart doesn't report directly to the Superintendent.
That is correct.
Yes. She reports, and then, so that's my ask of the Board.
Dr. Gullett, did you have any additional information as we've been speaking with superintendents around the state?
Um, thanks, Madam Chair. We, at the request of, I think, Dr. James last time, mentioned some districts. I confirmed that, and Ms. Morant's been working on this. Osceola's mentioned, they have, it was, it's internal reporting to the Superintendent's staff.
Correct.
St. John's as well, talked to the Superintendent there. Miami Dade is, is the only one so far that we've found. I'm looking at Ms. Morant to confirm. I know, in, in talking with the Superintendent there, they have internal, but they also have someone external reporting directly to the Board, um, in addition. And I don't have any other, we don't have any other information at this time of anyone who doesn't have at least one reporting to, under the Superintendent somehow. But we're, we're pleased to support, I'm pleased to support whatever the Board's desire is, certainly, in this regard.
May I also just add, since we've referred to on multiple occasions now, the organizational chart, which is not uploaded to Board Docs here, since we're referring to it, for the record, can we have it included in today's Board Docs and attached under the Chair's authority as well?
Absolutely. Please.
Because people may wish to refer to that.
Thank you.
As today being the link back to that information.
Madam Chair, if I may add, thank you, Attorney Powers. And to say, and to clarify, it, it's not complete and updated, because until the Board has approved items, it is still a draft. I've heard a couple of comments, and, and, very appropriate, but, right, I know the team is working on the staffing plan, but the org chart will follow. Just wanted to clarify.
Absolutely. And the org chart that we look at does say draft in big red, bold letters, with yesterday's date on it. So agreed, Attorney Powers, because we have referenced it multiple times publicly, it was sent to us via email. But if it could be included in Board Docs today, that would help for clarification and transparency for those who may be viewing. Additional comments on this recommendation from Dr. James?
I think we, we talked about this at the last time we talked about that, and there was, I think there was all but one that said the same thing, so I don't think that's changed.
Well, I do have some clarifying questions. If, if this position, which currently is listed on the previously referenced org chart as Board Services, if this position was to be moved to a School Board hired position, my expectation would be the same as what it is to our other two employees. That that would be a contract employee specifically with the School Board, and not falling under salary schedules or anything like that of the Superintendent, because it, it changes the entire process. Potentially changes job description and, and duties and expectations. Definitely changes the evaluation process. As this Board currently has an evaluation process for both the Superintendent and the Attorney, there would be a new evaluation process entirely for another employee. And who that, how that evaluation process would look, would be up to this Board, and, and what that public conversation would then need to be. Those are my questions, and, and I guess concerns, in a lot of ways, about moving yet one more employee to the School Board's responsibility, because it does change several of the things that are currently in place.
And I can speak briefly as to evaluations, being the fact that, um, evaluations are confidential for one year, until they can be released. So that's, now with the Superintendent, that role statutorily is a little different, and by contract's a little different, because the discussion, everything happens concurrently and at the time. So if you were going to have a Board Clerk, you'd probably do it more like you've done with me, which would be where each Board Member individually gives their feedback, their comments together, and then those numbers are simply tallied together and go in the personnel file. There's not necessarily a public discussion of the entire evaluated process, because that is something then that is, if it's done individually, then there's no, no need for public discussion overall on it. However, any disciplinary action which would be taken, or things like that, that would necessarily then be out into the open, you know, not just disciplinary action, any, any negotiation, discussion regarding job titles or anything like that, that would be something then, that either the employee would have to be, by Board, by Board decree, would have to either be governed by the Board Chair, or would have to have everything related to them and their employment, you know, much more public.
And, and currently, the, the way that is, it has been set, that Board Services has reported to the Superintendent, Board Services has reported in a different organizational structure. But to date, Board Services has never been an employee of the School Board. And setting the School Board up for success, regardless of the five people sitting in these seats, if previous five people haven't made that decision, I'm, I'm interested in knowing why today is the day to make that decision. I, I mean, I'm, I'm curious. Maybe people with historical knowledge, maybe this conversation has occurred before. It, it hasn't, to my knowledge, but perhaps it has. Setting up future Boards with a third employee is, is something that this Board Member is weighing heavily to decide. If I may.
Dr. James?
Um, our Board Clerk, Ms. Martinez Lopez, because there is an individual in that position right now, and contracts were just renewed, all of our, we just did a renewal of all of our contracts for our employees, Ms. Martinez Lopez is going to sit in, in that position, or a position, and within Marion County Public Schools next year, regardless, right? Is that, is that, okay. She particularly is on an annual contract. So I don't, I don't think there would be a lot of change in creating a contract around an employee, because she's not on continuing contract. She's an annual contract employee. Her employment is renewed every year, based on her, and, performance. So I don't think that that has to be incredibly complex or complicated, because it's not like we would be absorbing an, an employee who's on a continuing contract with tenure. That, that's not the case. As for pay, I would say that the pay rate would stay exactly as the pay rate is now, and we would absorb that, that pay rate to stay the same. Regarding evaluations, we have, I, I, I mean, we have principals on campuses doing 40 and 50 evaluations every single year. This Board can do three evaluations. There's, there's absolutely zero reason why this Board can accomplish three evaluations in the spring of every year, to ensure that we are on track to meet everyone's deadline. And if the Attorney's on a different timeline than that, then I apologize for not knowing that. But there's zero reason why this Board can't make that happen. And the evaluation tool exists currently, is being used for all of Dr. Gullett's staff, and we sought her guidance when developing the evaluation tool used for her. And I imagine we, if wanting to change our Attorney's Evaluation Tool, which I have not seen, we could seek Dr. Gullett as the professional leader in his district for guidance in changing an evaluation tool. But the one that exists currently would be more than sufficient, as we, that's what we did for Dr. Gullett for two years.
So seeing right now, I don't think we have consensus. I think it does warrant going forward, because I think you have the majority of the Boards asking for that. Madam Chair.
Understood. Vice Chair Thrower, would you like to weigh in on this conversation?
Yes, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Here's my question, and we're spending a lot of time on this. And what I see is, and my concern lies more with support. We, right now, our Board Clerk is there at seven in the morning. We know we go late often with our Board Meetings, with off-air and things like that, going into the nine o'clock at night. Oftentimes, there's things that need to be signed after that. And there is a specialized skill set that is required for everything that needs to be done to serve the School Board. And so if the Board Clerk is not available, or is out, or has to take a leave of absence, whatever it is, would the backup person also be an employee of the School Board? And if not, what would that wrinkle create? You know, I'm much more about the workflow, the support. Those are, those are my bottom lines. You know, we've had this organizational structure forever. From what I've observed, it's mostly worked. We've had, you know, any position is going to have issues, but we're spending a tremendous amount of time trying to figure this out. And I just want to put forward that, in the end, it is about getting the work done, it's about getting the work done no matter who's there, and providing what that person needs, you know, to get the job done. So that's where I am with this.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Conrad, did you have anything to weigh?
I am in support of Ms. Martina Lopez being under the School Board. I would like a little more data on what districts are organized that way, and what benefit it has. I do feel it would be beneficial to the Board, and the fluidity of information. And so that's why I am interested in moving in that direction.
Chair, if I may?
Dr. James?
In Dr. Gullett's absence, or in Ms. Martinez Lopez's absence currently, Dr. Gullett appoints someone within her staff to fill in. So Dr. Gullett is our employee, but she needed to be at that conference a couple of meetings ago, and appointed a member of her staff to sit in her seat. And that member of her staff was not our employee. Attorney Powers, when you are ever absent, who fills in for you?
It's only happened once, but that was a outside council that we have, it's under employment contract.
So not an employee of the Board?
Yes, it is an employee of the Board.
An, an employee of this Board?
It's a contracted employee of the Board, but yes.
The School Board, not the Superintendent?
Right.
Okay. So I, you know, I don't think that it would be a huge ask for, you know, in the absence for Dr. Gullett to have a staff fill in, as she did herself.
And again, Ms. Morant, to, to your knowledge at this juncture, the number of districts that do have, that you've been able to clarify, that do have an employee directly reporting to the Board, that's responsibility of Board Clerk and/or Board Services, whatever that title might be, is Miami Dade?
Correct.
And Miami Dade, not putting you on the spot, I think they have about 450,000 students and nine School Board Members, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
There are definitely a lot more than we have.
But some of the previously mentioned, as Dr. Gullett said, some of the previously mentioned districts, Osceola, St. John's, others, they are not set up that way.
No, they have a similar structure that we have, that they support the Board, but report to the Superintendent, or designate her office. We're happy to support what the Board wants, but I will, they laugh, but I, I would like to have clarification. I'm, I'm just not quite sure where we're landing, or if it's discussed, come back. I, I just don't know where we're at right now.
Attorney, do we have to have majority consensus, or 100% consensus?
Consensus requires, it's like going to a restaurant, requires that, not that everybody liked the restaurant, but everybody doesn't hate it, so they'll agree to do it. So it's not a vote, but it is, everyone has to say, well, I'll do it, even if I don't necessarily agree. That's consensus. Now, having them continue to work on it doesn't need consensus. That's something that, if each person is going to contribute what their thoughts are, and they want to come back with another, you know, whack at it, that's, that's acceptable as well. But at some point, the Board has to make the decision whether it wants this to happen or not. So therefore, what you would need to do as a Board right now is decide, do you want to table that discussion for another time? Or do you want to... Or do you want to continue now, do you want to give potential, I mean, one person's mind or two people's mind may not be comfortable with giving consensus for it, and so they want to say, well, we need to know these factors in order to move forward. And then that, at that point, once those factors are known, you may have consensus, or you may have, you know, be able to vote.
Madam Chair, with that, with the attorney saying that, we, we see that we don't have a full consensus. However, however, you do see that there are several board members that want to proceed forward with this. So can we move this forward, and if we have to take a vote on it in a board meeting, then we can move forward to that point.
So Reverend Cummings, I was just about to, to interject, actually, at that point, since I seem to be a bit of the holdup, but I do want to ask Vice Chair Thrower, since we do have three board members that are interested in moving forward with moving this position to a school board-appointed position, Vice Chair Thrower, are you in agreement that we should move forward with that, or do we need additional conversation about it?
Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, um, you know, I, I can support it either way. To me, this is, it sounds like it's just turning into a bit of a power struggle, which I'm very uncomfortable with. I'll reiterate again, this is about the, the way of the work, the flow of the work, and getting the job done. And as far as my point about if, if our, if a board clerk had to be out for an extended period of time, it's one thing for somebody to sit in, you know, here and there, but, and we can work our way through anything. But again, let's just keep doing the right things for the right reasons, and keep our eye on the ball, and get this done, and move on. That's where I am with this.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and frankly, that's where I am as well, because we've spent an awful lot of time on this, and nothing about this is helping students succeed. So, I am in support of moving forward with moving this position, and all of the challenges and changes that will bring to this board in the future, I will be interested in seeing what that looks like.
Chair?
Yes ma'am.
In the end, it's about supporting whoever that person is that's in the position yesterday, today, and tomorrow. I'll end with that.
Yes ma'am, and Vice Chair, I know you were unable to potentially see, but actually, Mr. Greg Davis is filling in today for Ms. Martinez Lopez, so, when, your, your points are well taken, because there are opportunities such as the one we're experiencing today. So, as the org chart moves forward, we will have a position moved up to under a school board report, and if we can work on potentially drafting a new contract that will be specific to administrative assistant of the school board.
Contract, or just contract, or?
There, there would need to be new language, there's a new contract. We have agreed to a contract currently, that she is under contract as a superintendent employee, but this will be a school board employee with a new language, and potentially new responsibilities. I, I'm not certain what responsibilities that the superintendent currently has for that position, that may either need to now fall to the position solely, or that the superintendent will remove from that position. And so we'll, there'll be some delegation that will need to occur, and, under my understanding, potentially, Dr. Gullett, do you see it that way?
Certainly, we're happy to, excuse me, to review anything that we have there, and we'll work with Attorney Powers with regard to any information we can provide to the creation of that contract. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So additional questions about the district staffing plan? Board?
I do, I have a few.
Ms. Conrad.
I just need some clarification, and Mrs. Moran, I want to thank you for all of the work that you have been sending to us, I won't say frantically, but it's just a short time span to try to get all this information out to us, so thank you very much. And you recently sent some updated job descriptions, one of which is the staff attorney. And so, I just, I just need some help understanding between the job chart, which I'm trying to get back to here, and the job description. So when I look at the job description for the staff attorney, it's really identical to what our board attorney does. And the two things that we hire out for, support IEP meetings and advise the superintendent on staff contracts, we currently hire outside services for. And then on our, our chart, they're reporting to different places, and I'm sorry, I don't have that pulled up again, but, so, the staff attorney will report to the superintendent, the legal department, Attorney Powers reports to us, is that correct?
That's correct.
How, how is that going to work as far as communicating and deciphering which responsibilities, if their job descriptions are, are almost identical? And our staff attorney is taking care of those things, what is the goal for the staff attorney, and how is that going to look?
I can respond, and if Dr. Gullett wants to jump in at any time. So the staff attorney, the, the goal is that they will be able to support Dr. Gullett and staff. So some of the things that you mentioned that we are, are currently outsourcing, the idea would be to be able to utilize that staff attorney, and a heavy lift of that would be the different legislative changes that are taking place, and being able to guide staff. As you mentioned, the board attorney is, is just that, reports directly to the board and supports the board, and the idea is that these two individuals will, will work together, and have to work out what that communication piece looks like, almost similar to what we were mentioning about the board clerk, how they will have to work together with the superintendent, whoever's filling in for them at those times. So, there is definitely work to do, once that position has been filled with that individual, and also our staff, our board attorney.
Okay, so legally, if they disagreed on something, who would have the final say?
I think it would depend on what it is, or what the conversation is. I don't, I don't know, and I don't want to answer that, so I will turn to Dr. Gullett, I don't want to step too far out of my lane this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. To your question, Board Member Conrad, what I have, what I have learned in talking with other districts, they, this works usually very effectively, I think the attorneys would have to work very closely together, but the intention of this is to try not to outsource so many items, and providing support to our school principals who have questions, it might be custodial issues, we have a lot of new legislation coming down that need, staff need guidance on day-to-day operations, labor negotiations instead of outsourcing student discipline, you know, some of the, the day-to-day operational items that they need guidance on, and so it's really more the operational day-to-day pieces. So, items that go before the board are always going to be reviewed by the staff attorney, I mean, I'm sorry, the school board attorney, and so this is more, if you think about the early workings of the, of putting things together and answering basic questions and guidance, ESC may or may not participate, it just depends on that, that nature of, of need, but think about early stages, day-to-day pieces, how to guide staff, how to guide schools, than picking up the phone. And so, if there are items that are going to come before the board, or going to impact the, the district at large, the board at large, those attorneys would work together to do that, and that might even be a handoff, you know, to say, you know, this is a, the larger issue, this will go before the board, this has a bigger impact, perhaps legally, that would all be school board attorney, that doesn't change that.
So, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just have one more question on that. So, fiscally, it's us, it's equitable, that what we're spending on outsourcing our legal services is going to, is going to be comparable to the attorney that we're looking at hiring as far as pay scales?
This will definitely be a cost savings, I know the attorney we use, just HR in general, we, we spend over a hundred thousand with him, so it would definitely be a, a cost savings.
Okay.
Right, currently, as of last year, there was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars spent on outside counsel for ESC services and for labor and employment law. So, a staff attorney that dealt with specifically those two major issues would almost support one salary, but not necessarily overhead, and, and other factors as well. What would, I, I don't, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know anything about whether this person would be looking to do ESC services as well, but most of these outside counsel, they're outside counsel because they special, specialize in a particular area, labor and employment law, ESC counsel, or thing, it'd be very difficult to find somebody that had multiple specializations, but simply, or actually board certifications, but actually would be able to do, you know, most of this work, at least in, in part. We've got, the board has, has had discussions in the past about staff, having, having a staff attorney versus having outside counsel. Initially, it's not necessarily a cost savings, unless that person is doing a whole lot of outside counsel work right now. Our outside counsel, though, those two broad areas, those two major areas accounted for a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So, the other things we use outside counsel for, bond, here, and bond issues, some real estate concerns, or anything else, those are small in comparison. So, I don't want to mislead that there'd be a immediate cost savings benefit, because it, there probably would not be, there may be a service benefit in that, if it's primarily directed toward those two areas, and then also with those people with coordination with schools and staff regarding training on items. Now, I think one of the confusing parts is that the job description reads very much like mine, because it's basically an everything out there stuff, it doesn't delegate, board attorney's still going to be dealing with contracts for the board, board attorney's still going to be doing this, staff attorney's going to be doing these, it doesn't delineate sort of the role. So, do you need that person in a staff attorney position? If the role delegated and assigned is appropriate, it might be wonderful. If it's not a good mix, then it would not be so great. So, either way, for most of these things, we already have, we have to pay either for in-house counsel or for a staff attorney. But, the old saying, the devil's in the details, it's really going to have to boil down to how, how that's divided out. And it's a little unfortunate that we're in a position of the board having to need to vote on whether we're going to have certain positions, if we don't yet have a real good understanding of exactly what the positions are, or what they're going to need to be. So, it's, it's broad, I mean, good, it's broad that in the job description, it's a good thing that in a job description you are broad, so you give this person the ability to do a number of things, but not always specific.
So, am I correct in assuming that when we're looking at filling this position, we're looking with someone with expertise in the areas that we most frequently hire out for? So we're looking for someone with expertise in ESC and labor laws?
Labor laws, and a heavy lift would be the legislative piece. So, as mentioned, the ESC piece would be as needed or as appropriate, but a big heavy piece will be with the legislative piece in help, in helping to support staff, and, and just tagging off of what Attorney Powers said, you know, some things don't have a, a dollar amount associated to it, but if there are things we should be doing and we're not doing, or things we shouldn't be doing and we're doing, it, it can cost us, and we're all here to do, you know, the right things for the kids.
Okay, I just, I just want to state for the record that for this position, it is important for this board member, that if we hire someone for that position, that they are, that these, this is their, their, their mindset, their strength, you know, their focus, because otherwise, we're still going to be looking for outside counsel, and that defeats the purpose of adding this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Cummings?
And I was going to ask, with this staff attorney, it would be my hope that it kind of makes us more efficient, that this position would help us to be more efficient as far as supporting the staff. Am I saying that right, Sir Superintendent?
That's correct. Yeah, I, I really do think, I mean, I know this is new, so we tend to have some new models here in Marion County, but, but absolutely, it should be a collaborative effort, it does not replace anything in the role, and the importance of the role of Attorney Powers as a school board attorney to the board, but it should assist the staff. The, the basic day-to-day questions that I hear, and I know from my experience and decades of being in, in K-12 education, sometimes it's just a simple question, and, and the school board attorney certainly has a large load already, but, but having the answers to questions as the legislative pieces come, and maybe a simple question with, with labor law, that we don't need to, to talk to somebody externally, but somebody here on the ground that the negotiations team can answer, that, that day-to-day to provide more efficiency and response to those, to those items, are, are very great in public education right now. There are a lot of moving pieces, and a lot of people with a lot of questions, so providing that day-to-day guidance from the operations side is really a ten. As to the specialty, I'll tell you, I don't know, I mean, we just, we don't know, we have to be flexible with this, providing the, excuse me, the, providing the efficiency of, of support is what we're looking for from the operations side. That, that's been a, one of, one of the biggest requests from, from everybody I talked to, schools, departments, has been since I've arrived in Marion County. A little flexibility there. Thank you.
So while we're on that topic, my, my question isn't necessarily about, my question is about, we continue to talk about the legislative piece, and while I understand there is a lot of legislation coming down, I'm certain that the intention, at least I'm hoping the intention, is not that this new attorney would be advising on what statute now says ahead of the board approving policy, to ensure that we have our policies ahead. So, the, the legislative changes that are happening, absolutely, we've already implement, or already approved policy, the implementation of that policy with fidelity, and the procedures needed for implementation of that policy with fidelity could then fall on the staff attorney. Is that correct, Dr. Gullett?
Staff attorney doesn't, thank you, Madam Chair, staff attorney doesn't replace, it's, it's the school board attorney's right and responsibility to provide policy recommendations that come from operations, but wouldn't stand in the place of that, no, that's, that wouldn't be the staff attorney's role to do that, to take the place of that.
Because that, that's one of my primary concerns, in addition to a handful of other things that we've already discussed. So I, I think as this job description in its entirety comes before this board, then, then perhaps there will be additional questions at that time, but without seeing it in its entirety, to see what the requirements of the position will be as, before we're posting it for, for actually a hiring, there may be additional questions, but I, I think at this, at least at this point, there, there was another line in there, you and I, I know we talked about, specific to contracts, and I think we were talking about how that could potentially already be revised, because the idea of, of preparing contracts causes this board member concern, if they are contracts that have monetary implications, if the school board attorney also doesn't see those ahead of coming to the school board. So, I think we, I think we talked about how the, the contract piece could be looked at differently as that comes before us in the future, but just the, the line about preparing or reviewing and approving contracts causes me a little bit of concern, since that's a primary role that currently is being served by the school board attorney, and the school board often has implications in those contracts, anything that has financial implication the school board is certainly a part of, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I did, I did ask, and I, I just, I think I need to have it put out there, I did ask about that staff attorney, and who would be supporting that staff attorney in their role. Our, our school board attorney does have staff under him, and that person would, a new staff attorney would need some assistance, and I, I did get an answer, Ms. Moran, can you go ahead and share that?
Sure, so, currently in Dr. Gullett's office, she has an administrative assistant and a secretary, and the staff attorney would receive support from those two individuals as well.
Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair, to that, to Board Member Cummings' remark, question about that, it is not our intent to have a legal department, that's, that's what I want to make clear, and that's, that's very intentional, we, we are not at all trying to step in the role of, of that, in what the school board attorney's office, the legal department provides of service to the district and to the board, and so that's why it's, you know, we're going to, we're going to, we'll make that work, if, if there's a need going forward, and we find there are additional burdens, I certainly would bring that back to the board, but it isn't very intentional to not try to have any perception that there's any type of extra separate legal department going on, that is not the intent, just day-to-day efficiency support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sir.
Board, I have a couple of questions. Board, I have a couple of questions, but does anybody else have questions on the district staffing plan? Dr. James?
I just wanted to ask for a point of clarification for the community. We've received correspondence from the community regarding a few items, so I was hopeful you could clarify the pay range for a 90, which is a director, to a 93, which is an executive director, and then to a 94, which is a senior executive director. If you could just, for the record, share that with the community, that would be great.
I can. So, a 90 pay range is, which are for our directors, $101,523 to $114,950. 93, our executive directors, $105,908 through $119,922. And what was the third one, I'm sorry?
The senior executive.
Okay, so senior executive director is in line with our area superintendents, and that's $109,513 through $123,964. And I would like to add, these are posted also on our websites, website under the HR page, employment services, I'm sorry, under the salary schedules.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, if an individual moves, so we have a couple existing staff members who are, with this new organizational chart, will be changing their pay rank, when they move from one, one pay scale to another, do they get to jump from the beginning of the pay scale to the end of the pay scale, or do they do a lateral move within wherever they land within the pay scale?
So, practice is that they would move to where they would land in that pay scale, so whatever step they're at, and that's taken into consideration because of the experience that they would have had. So, if they're at step five with those five years of experience that we've already verified, that's where they would land in that pay scale.
Okay, so I wouldn't go from a step five to a step 15, and also go from director to executive director?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Ms. Conrad? I just have a few questions. Under exceptional student education, we have, we still have the six coordinators, and there's not any descriptions there. And so, I believe that was a question I had the last time, I just wanted to know what their specific areas were going to be. I know we're adding a director there, which I'm very grateful for, and a secretary, but any description on what those, and other areas, we have, we have descriptions on what their specialty will be. And, just because we've had so many issues in ESE this last year, I'm curious about what those are going to be.
Thank you, and I appreciate that question, and that was intentional, because as you know, with different issues that may or may not be going on ESE, I don't want to dredge that out, but they are reevaluating what that looks like. So, assigning a specific task to each coordinator at this juncture is just not where the team is right now. So, looking in, evaluating what those assignments will be, but then also being mindful, sometimes when we put a specific assignment and say, okay, Wantanisha, you're doing A, you're doing B, it kind of locks them in that space when we're looking at everyone being able to support that department. So, I don't think I answered your question, but hopefully gave some information as to why it's not there.
So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Moran, I see the area superintendent, Region Two, as a coordinator attached to that person. Is there, how are we handling it with Region One? I see a coordinator one attached to Region Two.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see one attached to Region One.
So, Region One, they have a coordinator, it's listed right under area super, Region One, as coordinator one, and then the same for coordinator two. Are you on page eight?
Okay, I see it.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you.
I see it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. Safe Schools on page seven, I think I'm reading this correctly, that we had, we, did we have four people listed there at one time and now we have three? I know that we didn't have the coordinator one of mental health before, but we have that now, so I'm just trying to make sure that the math on the right side is still accurate based on adding that person there. So, is the intent that we have a coordinator one that's Safe Schools, a coordinator one of mental health, and then a school security specialist, and it's still a reduction of one person in the department? I'm just...
Correct. So, a few things. So, to answer your question, yes, the, we had four schools, school security specialists, but we're going to upgrade one of those to a coordinator one. And then, we're also adding a coordinator one of mental health. So, the number, when you look at the reduction of staff, and I know it can sometimes be confusing, so on these sheets, outside of the first two sheets, are staff that are not administrative staff. So, we've captured the increase in the coordinators on the first two pages where we list all of the administrators, and on the last pages, pages three through 15, it captures staff outside of administration. So, yes, that is correct. We are reducing by one and adding two, so a net gain of one to that department, that entire department.
Okay, that makes sense to me now, I see that, sorry, I was, I'm looking too many things at one time. So, my other question, because the recommendation now is to bring the Safe Schools director to an executive director status, understanding, based on the conversation Dr. Gullett was having at the beginning of the meeting, and all of the things that are coming forth with Safe Schools from legislative initiatives and so forth, can we also anticipate an executive director job description change that encompasses much of that information as we are working on all of the, this was just a new one, we didn't talk about the job description on that one, because you had another one, Ms. Moran?
Yes, our plan is to continue doing the work to update all of the job descriptions.
Okay, all right, terrific. And I want Vice Chair Thrower to weigh in, because I hear, I believe she's unmuted, but my final question is going to be for Ms. Boston Ellis. So, let me see what Vice Chair Thrower, Vice Chair, would you like to weigh in on the conversation about the district staffing plan proposed?
Yes, I would. I have one comment and a couple of questions. Can you all hear me still?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. First of all, I just want to say that I love that the taxpayers, the residents of Marion County are reflected as number one on the organizational chart, because that's certainly the truth. I am wondering how many total employees are working under the Director of Emergency Management? Because what I see there is transportation, facilities, tech services, and custodial. What would be the approximate number of employees that this person is responsible for?
Bear with me to do quick math. So, I would say approximately 900 individual employees.
I'm sorry, how many?
Approximately 900. There are 436 in transportation and custodial, I think there are like two something, and then other employees throughout the other areas.
Chair Campbell, would you please repeat that number?
I'm sorry.
I hear the board quite well, but I am having trouble hearing people in the, you know, that are presenting, so my apologies for that.
Yes, she said approximately 900 employees.
Okay, thank you. And, that's a lot of employees and a lot of responsibility, and I think I even left out facilities, and we're looking at building schools. While I am very aware of our strategic plan and the importance of making sure that we are directing as many resources as possible to, you know, academic success, I don't think that we can do anything other than acknowledge the importance of operations and what that entails and what we are asking of that position. And it just seems a little strange to me that it's, it's not a senior executive director or even a deputy superintendent of operations. You know, in the past, we have tried to function without a deputy superintendent of operations, and that was quite challenging, and we have enough challenges. So, I would just ask for the rest of the board to weigh in on what I'm sharing here. It seems, it seems like the workload and the responsibility definitely warrants it either being a senior executive director position or a deputy of operations, you know. I think it's just important to remember our history in this respect. That's, that's my first thought, and then my second is, it's just a little, it stood out to me that the Director of Early Learning is under secondary when I think about the philosophy of early learning is to accelerate kids early and really, you know, get them on the path to success. So, I just thought it was a little bit odd that it's falling under secretary, I, not secondary, secondary. So, I'm not sure that it really matters, but it was something that just jumped out at me. So, those are my two things.
And Ms. Thrower, I'll allow the board to discuss the first topic, but just a point of clarification, the Director of Early Learning reports to our Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Yes, Vice Chair, so I'll say what Ms. Moran was saying, the way the org chart looks, it looks as if the Director of Early Learning, Mental Health and Wellness, and Directors of, and Student Assessments fall under the Senior Executive Director, but in actuality, that's not the case, because it's a direct line report for all of those directors to the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So, the Director of Early Learning, Mental Health and Wellness, Student Assessments, Grants and Federal Programs, Professional Leadership in Learning, and Technology and Information Services, all of those directors report directly to the Deputy Superintendent.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, and now for my other concern.
Thank you for bringing that up, Vice Chair Thrower. Ms. Conrad?
I would agree, it's something that's been weighing heavily on me, the workload for that position is extremely high. So, I am in supporting, considering that the executive director either being moved to the senior executive director or area superintendent. I know that they did, I know that you all did add a coordinator two to transportation, but those are labor, the positions that she is, she's managing currently, those are labor-intensive positions. You know, they don't run on their own, as we all know. It's a big job, and so it is something that I, this board member would consider, yes.
Chair? Dr. James?
I'd also like to ask, it says Executive Director of Operations and Emergency Management, but I believe there was conversation of moving Emergency Management to Safe Schools. Can we?
That's what I was about to say, too. And that could, a leap that could answer that question.
But Emergency Management was only one position, if I'm not mistaken. Dr. Gullett?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your thoughtful feedback. There are a lot of still-moving pieces here, and in light of what I've just shared this morning, I spoke to a couple team members, I need to set up a meeting with my entire team, because we were, we were, some of us were there, not all of us were there. We have to adapt to needs and where we are as a district and what we need to do, so I still think there might be some changes internally and some transfers we did add. I spoke to Ms. Dobbins directly about what are your needs, how can we support you? And that was her request for that, that additional position, which I wholeheartedly support, but there's still some moving pieces there to make sure that we're balancing the needs. As we talk about construction, facilities, and all that, we will, I anticipate, we will grow. We will need to grow, but we haven't started building yet. So, when, as we do that and start to prepare the planning, we've been through that before, we will need to be flexible and add positions. So, we had already moved Food Services off, Safe Schools is off, and so we will, there's still an opportunity there. Emergency management is something being discussed currently and need to have a conversation with staff first, with all of the staff, because that's the right thing to do to determine where that needs to be. So, I would just ask for the board to, we could bring that back at a later time, but that's something that's still in process, but it need to do, we need to do as a team first, because of the needs coming. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. So, I do, I would support the transition of Emergency Management to Safe Schools. I realize it's just one person, but the job, if we have a significant hurricane season, is ever-encompassing. And, what I don't want to see is a leader having to stop focusing on the rest of the work to focus on Emergency Management. And we may have uneventful hurricane seasons forever and ever, and that would be a beautiful thing, but we may also have a season like '04 where we didn't have a full week of school for five weeks. And, you know, to manage that on top of managing the other pieces is a lot. So, I would, I would encourage and support that transition. I appreciate Ms. Thrower bringing up the, this step and increase in level for that job. I, I could get behind that. The last time this district got rid of a Deputy Superintendent of Facilities, we had a hard time.
Yes, we did.
So, I would support the Executive Director of Operations, being a Senior Executive Director or a Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Facilities. I think that there are lots of pieces underneath this Executive Director specifically that are tied very closely to our strategic plan, transportation being one of them, and I, I think that it just needs the focus, as it all does, but I know that we have struggled previously when we have removed that Deputy Superintendent. And if we've, and if those who have lived that know that it's, it hurts, because then you wind up being reactive, and I want to try and avoid that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. I, I too am interested in having more conversation about if that position were to be moved to a Senior Executive Director at least, since we now have a Senior Executive Director. This is all brand-new. We never even had that position before. But, 900 employees is a lot. I understand there are directors or supervisors or coordinators that are in between some of those, but that, that is a lot. I, I know that the organizational chart also is kind of a work in progress, but I am interested in, in why we have a dotted line going to the superintendent for our two area superintendents, but not for the other Senior Executive Directors, so I'm not sure if that still needs to be that way or not. But, the way it currently looks, we have the three Senior Executive Directors and the two area superintendents directly reporting to the Deputy Superintendent, but we also have a dotted line to the superintendent, and I'm not certain why that is, only for those two areas. So, Dr. Gullett?
Again, the organizational chart, I haven't even seen the final, I know that the team works on that, but I think that's just something that hasn't been updated.
Okay, so, all of these things are in draft, and we understand that, so that's good. I know my final question, but I want to make sure that the board has had all of their other questions answered before we bring up Ms. Boston Ellis. Are we ready for Ms. Boston Ellis? Okay, my final question of Ms. Boston Ellis is, we've heard big numbers, we have heard that this will be overall 7.7 million, 4.2 of which is coming out of the general fund, but as we ebb and flow and so forth, it really is an increase of 2 million, if I'm understanding Ms. Moran correctly. And, my question of Ms. Boston Ellis is, the simple question is, how are we paying for it? But, the more complex question is, from where are we taking it to pay for these, this $2 million in increases to this district staffing plan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I cannot answer that question until we pull the budget altogether. If you, you may or may not remember our process for budgeting. Typically, the board approves the staffing plan, but once we pull all the budgets together, if we realize that we are at a deficit, then we begin to look at department budgets, we look at vacancies, and we prioritize what's the most... look at vacancies, and we prioritize what's the most important thing. My objective is to bring a balanced budget to you along with Dr. Gullett's approval, and that's what we will do. But this is our normal processes, and that's why I was wanting you to hold off on hiring positions, even at the school level, until we knew what all of the money is. And I'm trying really hard to be succinct with this and not get on my soapbox again today, but we, we have to be mindful of priorities, and we'll determine. And just like you heard Mrs. Morant talk about, we added units along the way during the current year. When you approve the budget, it's balanced, and if there are additional needs that we had unfunded, such as we unfunded bus drivers, bus aides, because the year prior, they, they didn't even come close to hiring the number of units that they had requested. We unfunded additional units where we thought we could hire people out of grant funding and other fundings. Some positions, we didn't even fill. If a person retired and the department was able to function without that position, we didn't. So that is our process. You approve the staffing plan, and then we go to work. And this year, we have a lot of work to do because, as you recall, you added a lot of units at the school level. And maybe I should have told you at that point, we were trying to roll this year some units that were in ESER into the district budget. This was going to be the first year, and next year, we were going to pull more units in. So this is going to be a very challenging year, but you will have a balanced budget when we bring it to you. And that's really the only answer that I can give you now.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. It, it always causes me, this individual board member, it always causes me pause. While I philosophically agree in paying for people more than programs, or people more than, you know, I philosophically agree with that and have made that statement before, with a price tag of this, knowing what the price tag looks like for school-based support, which also very, very strong, let's, every dollar this district brings in is because of students. And so every employee, every person, every dollar that we spend should be in support of students, because they're why we're here. And while the staffing plan itself shows a reduction in eight employees, the increases of the jobs that we are putting on some of our current employees, bumping them to levels in the pay scale and those sorts of things, is a hefty price tag. And so I, I sympathize with you and your department, wondering where it's going to come from. And, and I know that that's something that, that I have concern about, and, and so I wanted to give you the opportunity to express your concern to the board, because while this board does need to approve the staffing plan to help drive your decision, ultimately, budget is what this board is responsible for. And while you absolutely have always and will always continue to bring us a balanced budget, it does cause me concern, wondering from where the money will come for these changes.
I think what you have to also remember, Chair Campbell, is our revenues have exceeded our expenditures for many, many years. So we're living on, for the most part, savings. And so that's why we go through this exercise every year. And until we get to that point, or get closer to that point, or get additional funding other places, and even as we deal with the family empowerment scholarships, you know, because that is an unknown, and all districts are struggling with that unknown. But until we get that in line, we will continue to live off our savings, and our fund balance grows at the end of the year because of vacancies, because of unspent funds, but you, but you have to remember that salaries are recurring expenditures. And, you know, you want to give good raises to employees, and you want to do a lot of things to support students, and, and I would say that everything supports students, bus drivers, custodians. You know, I would say, you know, my department, all departments support students, and that's just my personal opinion, because we want our district to be successful as well. But we will take what you approve, and we will work through that with Dr. Gullett's leadership and the rest of the leadership team, as we have done every year since I've been in this department, even when I wasn't leading it, and make priority decisions for our district. And that's really all I can tell you now, because once you approve it, then that's when we go to work, and we have to go quickly to try to get to that balanced budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Appreciate that. Any additional questions from the board? Vice Chair, do you have any additional questions on the district staffing plan?
Yes, would you please just confirm where we landed with operations from the senior director and looking at executive director or deputy of operations again?
And I think what I heard, and Dr. Gullett can correct me, is that she's convening the leadership team to continue working on balancing out or reviewing the org chart and also placement of assignments.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett, would you like to reiterate for Vice Chair?
Yes, I know, and it might be difficult to hear. Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Yes, we, because of what I shared at the beginning of the meeting and some of the very recent components of our needs, appreciate the board's flexibility. We need to have an internal conversation, and then if, if there aren't any additional changes, we'll bring back some revisions, but need to just make sure we vet those out appropriately as the, the needs are changing quite rapidly right now. So there will be some, we will do some follow-up to that position in particular, but maybe some additional changes there. I just don't want to get ahead of that conversation with my team. This is, you know, the operations piece, and then we bring up the recommendation to the board. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With no additional questions or comments on item 4.1, is there any public comment about our district staffing plan? Seeing and hearing none, thank you, Ms. Morant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morant.
The item 5.1, value adjustment board appointments. I received an email. I guess this means I'm leading this one, so, yes, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Just pulling this up. As to the value adjustment board, currently, Ms. Thrower has been serving, and let me pull this up here, sorry. She has indicated she would be fine with continuing her service to the value adjustment board as the school board representative, and she's also seen that Gwendolyn's doing a great job there, and she'd be willing to continue. If you agree, Chair Campbell, then she would like to continue that as it is.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. So this is a conversation that the board has to have consensus on. First of all, I'll start with Dr. Gwendolyn Dawson, who I believe her title's executive director of the Housing Authority. She has been our community representative on the value adjustment board, and if the board agrees and has consensus, then I believe she's doing a fine job and would be a terrific reappointment to that board. Do we agree to that or have another community member we would like to recommend?
I, I concur. I recommended Ms. Dawson several years ago for that position, and she has done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
On that board.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay. Consensus on that, okay? And then moving on to Vice Chair Thrower being our appointed board member representative to the value adjustment board. If there is another board member interested in serving in that role, then certainly, please, this is the opportunity to speak. I know we have talked about committee assignments in the past, but just want to ensure that each board member has an opportunity to serve in whatever committee capacity you would like to serve. So anybody else have an interest in serving? I'm seeing head nods shaking no. Okay.
Vice Chair Thrower has done a tremendous job there, demonstrated that she's very knowledgeable in that area. I think we need to leave her there. Let me back up and correct something. I said Ms. Dawson, it's actually Dr. Dawson, Gwendolyn Dawson. So I concur that we can move forward with Ms. Thrower, Vice Chair Thrower as our representative.
Thank you. Vice Chair, you have consensus that you will be our appointed representative to the value adjustment board for yet another term?
Okay, great. I'm glad to continue doing it, and it's starting to sound more and more like I'm in a fishbowl. So I'm going to sign off now. I really appreciate that it worked as well as it did this morning. I really wanted to participate, even though I couldn't be there in person. So, so thank you very much. I will see you guys soon.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the opportunity and working it out to be here with us. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. So is there any public comment on the value adjustment board appointment? Seeing and hearing none. Moving on to item 6.1, which is the planning and timeline for impact fee ordinance.
All right, and I asked that this be placed on the agenda. I believe it might have been at the request of a board member, but if not, it was a great idea because it was mine. Maybe that was it, you know, right? The impact fee ordinance, as you know, there's a few, there's bits of news that are going on specifically about how we can set that up. Now, our public workshop that we would need, if we follow one component of this, we'll need two public workshops. Those had to be rescheduled for advertising purposes first. And just to back up, where we are with this process is that our contractor, our consultant, has identified the funding sources that we need to take advantage of and need to look into, has also identified different ways that we could do that. This is Binish, and Binish has also been used by the county for some of their projects as well. They've provided some recommendations, but ultimately, it's up to the board to choose which of the sources that it elevates over the others, or how they break up that, that division. Along those lines, one of the recommendations is going to be, the board is going to have to give a recommendation to the county commission as to an increase in the impact fee. Impact fee for new construction can be earmarked only for things that are going to be, those new residents will be impacting. So if we choose to ask for the same amount that it was at the time of its suspension many years ago, and it's continued to be suspended each year because we didn't have a working sort of inter-local agreement or process that allowed for any of those things to happen, if we continue to, or if we went from that suspension, it would be approximately $3,900 for an average home. However, and that's, that's impact on a new home being built. If we choose to go above 50% increase of that, there has to be public hearings, and we have to justify that under what's called the extraordinary circumstances test, and that's in statute. And we had some discussion regarding that statute, and we do need to be able to identify those concerns to the public and to the county commission. So where we are now is we've got to pick that step in the process, or pick that process up. If we are going to choose to ask for an increase in the impact fee and the reassessment of impact fees again, then we will need to present that to the county commission. We will need to set those two public workshop hearings if we wish for that amount to be over the, what it was in the past. And it looks from our consultant's research that in all situations, it will need to be more than has been reviewed or asked for in the past. When we get to the public workshop hearings, I recommended that those be seven days apart, and we have at least seven days' advance notice in print of each of them for a public workshop. Then we will need to, I've communicated and coordinated with Mr. Minter, the county attorney, regarding some of this. What we will need to do at that point is we'll need to submit an ordinance to the commission, and Mr. Minter and I can work on that together as well and have been. That is going to be something that has to have, that has to have some language changes. There was, besides the 2006 ordinance, there was also one that was requested again in 2010, and one that was requested again in 2015. So each of them have differing language. That language will, I'll need to be consulting with the board occasionally on what we want the language to say, because it's not all apples-to-apples comparisons. You'd think that an ordinance for an impact fee, straightforward language. Well, actually, it depends a lot on the funding sources, what it's being looked at for, and a number of factors. At its fundamental level, this board needs to be able to do two things for the county commission. One, provide them, if we have not already, with Binish's study and its recommendations. And number two, to provide them with an ordinance that includes both the language and, most importantly, a number. What is it we actually wish to ask for? And those conversations are a bit premature before there's a public workshop. The public workshop, we would actually need to be stating what our reasons are for potentially needing more, and the public workshop, after those come together, then the board would need to decide on the number. As far as the language, I will have recommended language that Mr. Minter and I agree on, unless there's any item of disagreement, then I'll just place that before the board for a vote. So today, I wanted to bring this all up so we're all on the same page again, and also to discuss when we wanted this timeline to go. Now, we have, on the county commission, it does require the vote of four county commissioners. And in this case, we now have only four-panel county commission. I haven't gotten any indication one way or the other of how, what comments they may have on any of these concerns, but this is likely something that until there is a replacement appointed by the governor for Commissioner Gold, that it may be best held at that time so that all county commissioners can be on board with that factor. Otherwise, it's just going to require a unanimous vote of the, of the four remaining members. So as far as when we set the public workshops, we can do that now, or we can set a drop-dead date by which time we need to set those, whatever you want. I'll open it up to the rest of you.
Ms. Conrad? I believe we need to go ahead and set dates.
Okay.
Okay. And just so I understand, we need to set two dates. The first date has to be, because of our new contract with the Gazette and publishing, the first possible date is the 30th of June.
That'd be right. Yes.
That's the first possible date on the 23rd.
Yeah.
We would have to submit to the Gazette by the 21st for publish on the 23rd.
Yes, correct.
So the, just so everyone's on the same page.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
The first possible date to have a workshop is the 30th.
Yes.
We then have to have two workshops, seven days apart. So the, even if we expedite this as quick as possible, it would be the 30th and the 7th. But then we have to have a board meeting to vote on it before you send it to county commission. Is that correct? I just want to understand the timeline.
But, but Attorney Powers, even though we have a contract now with, and sorry if I cut you off.
No, you're okay.
That, that though we have a contract with the Ocala Gazette, it doesn't mean we don't also still have a contract with Star Banner. We could still utilize the Star Banner potentially?
We do if there, if there is.
So in that event, would it be possible? So in that event, would it be possible to have a notice go in on June 20th, the same day we have the notice go in about our board meeting, and have a public hearing an hour before our June 27th board meeting?
And that's what Lena tried to do last time, and it didn't work. So my concern would be like, I don't want to put eggs in a basket and then it not work again? And I'm glad that you mentioned it, but I kind of want to be very clear. The reason we had to cancel those workshops is zero responsibility of this board and the way of work of Marion County School Board. Because again, but just, the Ocala Star Banner did not acknowledge receipt of our ads. And so that is why we had to cancel our workshops. And I just want the community to understand that. We sent it in with proper notice, with receipt, based on past history and timely to return. And we were left with not proper notice because it was not acknowledged. So that's why we've transitioned to work with another paper as well. So this board member would just be hesitant to put eggs in the Star Banner basket if we're not going to...
My advice has been, when dealing with the issues that revolve around advertising, is that at least for now, I would seek advertisement in both venues. And if both come through, wonderful. If only one of the two comes through, then that's the one that doesn't get their invoice paid, so.
And perhaps, I'm not sure if Mr. Christian or Ms. DeBick, or with Ms. Martinez Lopez not being present, I'm not certain. The advertisement for the June 27th school board meeting, I don't know if either one of you are aware, if that has already been put forth to some media publication, and if so, which one? And if it hasn't, then can we do this in tandem and add potentially the recommendation four o'clock on the 27th of June? I'm just...
I have asked that question of Ms. Martinez Lopez, and she sends, she is, I'm informed that she sends the entire schedule to the Star Banner. And that's why those regular meetings have still been posted, because those ads were already approved and, like, submitted previously. So that's why the Star Banner is still running the ads for our existing meetings. But it's the making the change that is not getting accepted.
We have a list of what, of meetings going back for months. You know, we say in advance, here are a large number of meetings we know of. And then we set special meetings, or we set additional work sessions, or things like that. So we don't always know if they're not being communicative, whether, whether they're advertising because it's just one that was in their queue from months ago, or whether they're advertising it because they're responding to our most recent request.
And the option that, I believe you're the one that said, that also another mode for a 10-day notice or seven-day notice, or whatever the notice needs to be, could be posting to Marion County Board of County Commissioners website as well? Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
Not entirely accurate.
Okay.
It's, that is a, that is a possibility if we, the city, the county, together, work together to create a public notice advertising website, which would be controlled by the county, and we would have to have one person here who was a liaison with the county, who specifically was, was meeting their requirements for posting of the ads. But that's, that's something that the city of Ocala hasn't yet done with, and other municipalities haven't yet done with the county, and we haven't yet done that either. So far, it's been, you know, reliance on private entities. But that is a possibility for the future. But it's not, we can't just go advertise it on the county's website without some setup.
So to set up some dates, may I propose a couple, and then we'll see where we go from that point? Or do you have something else, based on what Dr. James has just said?
I just want to add too, the county commission only has one meeting in July, and that's on the 18th. And they were previously here and said they needed a 10-day public notice for their meeting. So we have to backtrack the 10 days from the 18th, which I think puts us at the 5th. And the 4th is obviously a holiday. And the first possible day for us to workshop is the 30th. So I don't actually think there's enough days for the July county commission meeting.
Agreed. And so my proposal, what I was going to recommend, would say July 7th and July 14th, or July 6th and July 13th, something like that, being a week apart. Then we would have our work session regularly scheduled on July 20th to firm up exactly what our thoughts are based on the two public meetings that we held. We would then approve whatever languages on our July 25th meeting, understanding we would have a placeholder on the July 25th meeting, and that document, whatever finalization and the work session on the 20th, would then be uploaded at the discretion and recommendation of the chair. We could potentially approve whatever our recommendation is on July 25th in preparation for the first county commission meeting in August.
We wouldn't meet the first.
Is there, do they meet on the first?
I believe they meet on the, they meet on the first and 3rd.
Okay. So then it would be the second meeting in August of the county commission?
I think it would be the August 15th meeting.
Okay.
And that sounds fine to me. I just want the board to be aware, I will be on a plane on the 7th, July 7th. So depending on the time of the meeting would depend on whether I can participate via phone.
Okay. And maybe it's not a Friday that we need to do those, since the school district is traditionally closed on Fridays in the summer. Maybe we move it to the Thursdays? I just, I wanted to throw out those two weeks to say if we could do the first week of July, the second week of July, having the third week of July already a scheduled work session on the 20th, that we would then finalize all of the language based on the two community meetings we would hold, and then have it by July 25th to approve as a board?
That sounds fine with me.
That's good.
The 6th, I would be able to participate via phone.
I could do the 6th also.
Okay.
All right. Can we reiterate those dates?
I don't know that we're all available entirely, but I don't think Dr. Gullett may be available. I don't, I don't know if that would hold us up. Potentially, as a, you could have someone sit in the seat, because it is the public meeting for the public to hear their presentation, for them to give their feedback. Those are what the intent of those two workshops are solely for.
Right. Those workshops have to be dedicated to solely, not even just school finance in general. It has to be dedicated solely toward the issue of the extraordinary circumstances justifying the impact fee.
So barring the availability of this auditorium, we will tentatively set July 6th and July 13th for those public workshops. And then the placeholder for the July 20th work session, where the board will have the finalized discussion, and July 25th will be the board meeting. We also need the placeholder on board. Do we want to have those two meetings at 9:00 a.m.? Or do we want to have one at 9:00 and one at 5:30?
I would like to see us do a morning and an evening, just to make ourselves available as much as possible.
I agree. Okay. So tentatively, based on the availability of this auditorium again, and we don't have that information at this point, but we could say 9:00 a.m. on the 6th, 5:30 on the 13th? That's good. And we don't have Vice Chair Thrower to weigh in on that, but hopefully, we'll be able to at least have a quorum to have the public meetings, understanding that we can go back and review the videos of what the comments were that came forth from the public at those times, and that we will still have a full board conversation on July 20th as well. So that should give us time. We can prepare the county for when they will receive information from us, and they can go ahead and tentatively schedule their conversation for August 15th.
And I am aware that the county commission may be willing to schedule a special meeting to hear it. So being that we would be giving them presumably the document on the 26th of July, they may be able to cheat it up a week if they so chose to schedule a meeting designated specifically to this topic.
So I would just request, I believe, from the board, Dr. Gullett, if you would like to communicate with, or if you would please communicate with the county administrator on what our timeline is, and when they would choose to, if they're going to have that on August 15th, or if they are going to schedule a special meeting just for this conversation?
I will do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any additional commentary on that from the board? Seeing and hearing none. Is there any public comment on our timeline for impact fee consideration? Seeing and hearing none. Moving on to board comments and concerns. We'll start with Attorney Powers. Do you have anything from Legal today?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, anything from Board Clerk?
Nothing to add, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. James?
Just great, I appreciate the great work that our, we're doing in HR and continuing to figure out this staffing plan. And I'm grateful for the work we're doing. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. Just looking forward to seeing you all tonight at graduation for MTC. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad?
Just a brief thing. I also want to thank Ms. Morant and her team for the hours and hours of work they put into preparing the staffing plan and also taking into consideration the concerns that the board brought forward. I am thankful for the teamwork that takes place between the district and the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
Very good. Presentation this morning from HR. Looking forward to getting that moved down the road so we can get on with the business of this issue. Have a good day.
Thank you. And I have no further comment other than looking forward to the Marion Technical College graduation this evening, right here in this room at 5:30. Or we have to be here at 5:30 or 5:45, 6 o'clock is whenever that is occurring. So with that, and there being no further business, this work session will be adjourned.